Okay, this meeting is being recorded as required by executive order, whatever the heck it is for posterity.
Very good. Good evening, everyone. Hello. We'll start it off with public comment. Any public comment, even through a mask?
Since no members of the public have asked to be admitted and we don't have, I have not received any mail, so no.
Okay, very good. Then minutes, the, once again, extraordinary minutes for the April 14th meetings. Everyone had a chance to take a look at those.
Here, here.
Did I actually get all the spellings right?
I made one correction. Sorry. You referenced Diana when I think you meant Deanna Dewey, and her name is spelled D-E-A-N-N-A. So I fixed that. I hope that's okay.
Thank you.
I've been reading minutes on the town website recently for a lot of different reasons. I'll talk about that later. But it does specifically say that these minutes are not official until they've been voted on by the board. So if there are changes, we can make the merit.
Okay. That was the only thing I saw.
I just need to coordinate that with Alicia.
Yeah, yeah, good. Okay, financial reports. Jan, do you have, you sent out a report. Any highlights from that?
Just that the C-card money for 2019, 2020 came in, and there was no action in April whatsoever. So I just, you know, dated that to May 8th, so to record Christine's deposit to the C-card.
It's an amazingly spare report.
I see someone joined us. Is that you, Sheri?
It is Bob. How are you?
Okay, good to hear you. Good to hear you. Okay, the library operational financial report. Christine?
Do we have to vote to accept the minutes?
Yes, we do. I still move.
I second.
The minutes will reflect Bob had a brain cramp. Thank you for finding that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Okay, thank you. Now Christine.
Okay, so if you look at the financial report, you know, at the end of April, we're at 83% through the fiscal. And we are running slightly under. You'll see where we're at just about 100% on Lion Tech, because that's paid quarterly, and we made that payment in April. Wages, we have, that's going to run under probably through the rest of the year, although I have something to say about that in a minute. We're under on books and media, because most of our orders were held up in April. But we have restarted accepting deliveries and will be paying, we will, we will pay, we will spend 100% of that before the
We will spend that money.
We will spend that money.
We're not giving it back.
So there. There isn't, we, a lot of our vendors stopped shipping for a while, but that has mostly restarted. And in fact, we have piles of books to catalog and get ready at the library. So that's why that's a little under, but we will take care of that. We're going to be over on pantry paper custodial. We're going to be over even more once the shipments of cleaning supplies that I've ordered come in. We're going to be under on phone and electricity because of, because things. That's kind of out of my control. We'll pay down office supplies, office equipment. I actually bought, we bought a laptop, and I have the invoice for that, so that will spend that down. But essentially, we're pretty much where we, where we want to be.
Christine, Chris Fairchild had done some work. He knew how much he had, so you should be getting a bill from him. If he doesn't, let us know.
That came in yesterday's mail.
Oh, okay, good.
So I will, I will make that payment to him, and then that will be spent down.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw Chris working out in front of the library the other day.
Yeah.
Let me know if there's any balance left, and then go to like step two of stuff we want it done. Great.
Yeah, we won't, we won't leave anything there.
Okay, yeah, just let me know, and we'll, we'll get ahold of him.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions on operating?
When you talk about books to be cataloged, and maybe you'll get to this later, is there any help that people that want to come in and help do that? Or what's your feeling about that?
We're, we're in the process of developing a plan for gradually bringing people back into the library to do that necessary work and a phased reopening of services to the public. So
I saw that on the agenda. I don't want to steal your agenda on that.
So that will, that'll, that'll be, yeah, I'll talk about that then.
Okay, good. Any other questions on the financial health and welfare? Very good. Library directors' reports.
All right, well, these are unusual times, so this is an unusual report. Running an empty library actually turns out to be more work than I thought it would be. Everything. Who knew that running a closed library would take all of my time? But I don't know, there's a, there's a lot of stuff still going on. You know, the digital circ is more than doubled over last year. We've added Canopy. People are very appreciative of that. We are still ordering books for when we reopen, although we have shifted some money into digital content, because that's what we can actually provide right now. The library, the building itself seems lonely, calling out for help by breaking down and causing me to call repair for it. I don't understand how the elevator could have stopped working, but it did. We're waiting on circuit board for that. But other than that, things are just fine for the building itself. We did, we are, you know, doing programming virtually and to the extent that we can. The art hearts in the window was very popular. So it's nice to see that people are still interacting with the library, even though we're closed. We get calls fairly regularly for various things. So there's that. I've been working away on the grant, the state remodeling grant process. Until they tell me there isn't any grant to be had, I'm going to keep going for it, and so far, no one has said that, so we're carrying on. The borrow-it funds came in. Jan mentioned that. We actually got a little more money than last year, which is nice. It came in at $12,400, which was more than 2,000 more than we had last year. We have not yet spent down our last year's C-card funds, and that also needs to be done. Usually, we've spent a little more of them, but because we're a little behind in the material spending, because we've been closed, there's still a fair amount of that to, to spend down. But not to worry. We will, we will, we will spend the funds. That has to be done by the end of the summer. So that actually may be very helpful should the town run into any issues, which brings up my next thing that isn't in the report. I was at the budget hearing, virtual budget hearing last night. Was anyone else there?
I was.
I was.
Okay, several people. So I consider it excellent news that the library was not mentioned at all. Basically, we do actually have a net drop in the library budget, which is only because we are paying off the EverSource loan early. But, I mean, obviously, the budget has not yet passed, but it, it looks, things are looking pretty good. We're getting, you know, it's essentially a flat budget, which I think is by far the best we can hope for in the current circumstances.
Christine, were you expecting there to be any expenditures in the capital budget?
They did cut our capital, yeah.
That's what I thought.
I mean, they, I was not actually expecting any capital expenditures in the 2021 fiscal year, but there was money that was meant to be moved into reserves toward the remodeling project in 2122. They did not do that. So that may have implications later.
Christine, do you remember what that amount is?
It wasn't that much. It was like $6,000 for the automatic entry doors. I would have to
Yeah, that's in your, that's in your report, isn't it? I think it's right in your report.
Is it?
That was in the report last month, if I remember correctly.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think you noted that last one.
Right. In any case, it, it doesn't have immediate budget implications for us. Nothing operational was touched. We didn't get the small materials increase or a couple other really small materials, things that I had asked for. But the staff wages, everything went up by union, with the union contract at 2.25%. And again, given the, given the circumstances, I'm very pleased. One more thing, I don't know if this is new business or director's reports, but Carol Herzig has announced that she is going to retire from the library rather than come back. She had been making noises about retiring, well, she's been talking about retirement for a couple of years now. She, she told me, we had had a conversation before this about whether, you know, whether she was going to retire, she has a new grandbaby. And she had said, when, no, I, I would miss work too much. I can't see how I could stay home all the time. Well, she called me up and said, well, I've been retired for two months, and I kind of like it, so she's going to carry on. I was concerned that the town would see this as an opportunity to say, well, don't fill that. Thankfully, they have not taken that position. I did, I guess I'm kind of skipping into new businesses. Is that okay, Bob?
Sure.
Okay. So filling, what I would like to do, and what is, I have discussed with Beth Moncada, and is acceptable right now in terms of our, you know, current financial situation, is I intend to promote Patty Holden to the position held by Carol. Because Carol's position was a union position, that does need to be posted to all town employees before I can fill it, but that's kind of a formality, I believe. I'm taking the opportunity, or I plan to take the opportunity to rejigger some of the responsibilities a little bit. My intention is to equalize the number of hours. So Carol was working 24 hours a week, and Patty was working 19 and a half. I plan to hire Patty at 27 hours, which makes her at the same number of hours as our other part-time library, union library assistant. And then hire in at 16 and a half hours, a circulation assistant who will primarily be doing desk work. Because the circulation assistant will be paid at a slightly lower rate than Patty had been making, it's actually revenue neutral. And I think it will allow for better coverage of our desk and off-desk needs. I haven't actually offered this job to Patty yet, but I'm just kind of assuming she's going to say yes, so.
I saw her at the library today.
Did you?
Yeah, while leaving. She was out on the porch.
Yeah. Yeah, we're kind of taking turns going in and handling stuff right now. So that's kind of where I, and the other thing is that if, if I promote Patty, as I hope to do, that will happen, you know, essentially immediately. But we'll wait on filling the circ desk position that will then open up until we are actually open and need a circulation person. It would be too difficult to try and hire and train someone right now, and given that we're closed, we don't need a circulation clerk. So that's kind of where that stands right now. Does that, anyone have questions or concerns about that?
Seems reasonable to me. What, what, any thoughts on from others?
Makes perfect sense.
Sounds good.
I had a hard time digesting it. I, I'll have to unpack it for a little while in my head.
I can, yeah. I spent all of this morning with like charts and graphs, and like, you know, if this, then that, and this money, and that money. And then it is a little bit much, but essentially
The bottom line is, it's revenue neutral, and you, you think you're going to offer Patty something that she's going to, she's going to like. And then it's a matter of finding somebody to occupy the, the circulation desk for 16 and a half hours.
Right, that's exactly correct.
Nice.
It sounds like it's revenue, sounds like it's revenue neutral over the long term. Over the short term, it's going to be a savings on the salary line, because we won't be bringing in the circ assistant until we reach the point that we are fully open for business in that position again.
Yes, there will be a, as long as that position is vacant, there will be savings. There will be, you may recall when, when Cindy retired and cashed out her, her unused sick and vacation time. That, I haven't seen the number yet, but I know that Carol had unused sick and vacation time that can be cashed out. Given that we're quite a bit under on the salary line this year, we may, even with that, come in under or at budget. But the, Beth assured me that even should that cause us to go over, that that is not going to be held as a negative. It's a known risk that they just don't accommodate for in budgets. So she told me
That's, that's the whole, that's
She told me not to fret.
That's the whole salary versus benefits conversation once again.
Right, right. But just a heads up that that, that will be probably happening.
When you post it, Christine, is it just town employees that can apply, or is it an open, open call?
For the position that Carol is vacating, the union position, it has to be posted internally just to town employees for five days before it can be posted externally. And as long as Patty applies for it, we will fill it internally, and it will not be posted externally.
And it can be written so that it's very person-specific?
Well, if I write that it has to be someone with a lot of public library experience, that pretty much eliminates everybody else, so I think it'll be good. I think it'll be fine. When we, when we do get to the point of filling the circ position, that'll be outside, probably.
Very good. Thank you. Anything, anything else, Christine?
No, that's my report.
Very good.
Yeah.
Committee reports. Sheri, do you have anything to update us on with the strategic plan? I don't think so, but I wanted to make sure I gave you that opportunity.
No, I think we're good. We made the few revisions that we talked about last week, and Christine has a copy last month, and Christine has a copy of that. So I think we're good to go for now.
Very good. With that, Christine, could you make sure that we all get a copy of that new document?
Oh, sure. I'll send it out tomorrow.
Yeah, that way we'll all be together and up to speed on it. Pals, is there any pals report?
Well, we haven't met, so I really don't think there's too much to report. Lynn, what do you think?
No, we're just waiting for the mini golf, for the trooper to send us his bill.
Maybe he'll forget.
Yeah, right. Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's about it.
Very good. Well, new business. We have some fun stuff to discuss. Christine, can you enable screen sharing for me, please?
Uh, yes, here we go.
I'll get started. Two things
Actually, Bob, I think I need to make you a co-host, and then you share.
Okay.
Hold on. My apologies, everyone.
Oh, it's Vanna and Pat Sajak, the co-hosts of the library.
Can I turn the letters?
It looks like you can grab the screen now, Bob. You go to your, you know, share screen at the bottom.
Yeah, that's what
Oh, okay. Can you, can you do that from where you are now, Bob?
You should be able to take it, Bob.
Yeah, host-disabled participant screen sharing, so.
Okay. Hold on, I'm sorry.
There are a couple of things I want to make sure people see. That's all I'm, well, let me get started. Two things have come up with our adjacent
Okay. You should be good now.
Okay, good.
Sorry, there you go.
Not a problem. First thing is that at the April 27th meeting of the Board of Selectmen, in the minutes is this passage. And I don't know if you can read it, if it's big enough or not.
Yeah.
But, but basically, the United Churches has formed a committee to sell the house and properties next to the library. Talks about legal and organizational hurdles, but you wanted town to know in case there may be interest. I've had a, an informal conversation, not for attribution, with one of the trustees of the church. And basically, where things are right now, the, the house next to us was originally the parsonage for the Methodist Church. And so to sell the property, it has to have approval by whatever the Methodist Church's organizing body is, committee tribunal, whatever, in, at the regional level, in addition to the Methodist congregation part of the United Churches. So it is not an immediate thing that's going to happen, but obviously, it's on the table. So I wanted to let you know about that if you hadn't seen it, and to get your thoughts about what we as a board should be doing.
Yeah, I don't know what you can do. Obviously, we, you know, we, we think it would be a great investment for the town to buy at least the parking lot part of the property, but I guess it depends on the price.
I think we should
Sorry.
No, you go.
Um, I, I think we should, first of all, ask for the lease from the town, but also see if there's any way we could just buy the two parking spaces, which would solve a lot of problems.
Do we know anything about the deed?
Well, does everyone understand that there, I believe the lot in the back, there's a one-acre lot that is an unbuildable lot, just so. And that, that could be of interest to us. Unfortunately, this is a terrible time for this to have happened. But directly behind our parking places is that one-acre lot, which would be perfect for future investment for the library. However, as I said, this is probably not the time to investigate, or not to investigate it, but to suggest it.
Before we even start looking at those things, they're great ideas. Do we have any idea of what the actual deed and deed restrictions are in terms of access? And both restrictions to us and the property that we're, that we leverage in terms of the spaces? Is that just part of the lease agreement? Is it really part of that property? Or was it just part of the agreement as it was written up? And I would have questions on access rights through our parking lot? And what else the deed may include or not include in terms of their deed and ours?
Well, that's why I think we need to get up to date with all that stuff. I mean, we had all that information years ago. I guess we'd have to go back and look for some of the stuff, but I think we should be proactive and figure all that stuff out now versus letting the town do something.
Was there any information? There, there was some information in that notebook as far as the deed. Did you see it?
I'll look through the notebook. I, or Bob, did I give you the notebook, or do I still have it?
You still have it.
Okay.
I'll also, I might have some information, too.
As it happens
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I know that the, you know, we have the original rental agreement for the property, but that's really not what we're after. We're looking for the, the lease rights of the, of the parsonage, because the parson because the parsonage has a right of way over the library to get to the parsonage. I don't know if the lot behind it has similar right of way over library property.
I think, go ahead, somebody. In the end, we're going to have to, I think, regardless, consult with an attorney. And I don't know if that comes from the town attorney. And I know this is early in saying, but we need to start thinking about that and cost of counsel, regardless of what happens, because we're going to need to understand what our legal standing is so that what rights we do have, regardless of what we do, can be maintained.
Certainly, the town attorney should be looking into that or should look it over, however.
Would the town attorney be doing that for the town or for us?
Well.
This is where I don't, the legal state.
I'm not sure about that. We should be in both, in the same, of the same interests, actually. But if, maybe we should think about hiring someone, but then that would, I don't know, budget wise, if that, how that would work. I think perhaps the town attorney would be the person to look at it.
This is David. I'd agree. And apologies for joining late. I have like 100 things going on simultaneously tonight, so. But I am here now. Yeah, I don't see a divergence in interest between the board and the library and the town. So I think if the town attorney, you know, is competent to look at the question, I think that's the right starting point.
I had a conversation with Laura and Dick McManus. And Laura directed Dick to talk to the town planner to establish some of that, like what rights and things are in play here. I haven't talked to Robin about it yet, but they're aware and are looking at it. Dick seemed to be of the opinion that the town is sort of forced to acquire those parking spots because there won't be sufficient access to the library for, the emergency vehicles need to be able to turn, among other things. But that was just Dick talking and I don't actually know what the requirements for library access would be.
Another interesting point would be, does that eliminate the leases? I mean, the rent that we have to pay them yearly? If in fact, we purchase those spots?
Well, if we purchase it, obviously.
Yeah, so.
Well, I think there are a couple of observations. One is our legal requirement for the number of parking spaces we must have. And that may be a derivative of our square footage or our estimated usage. We need to get that nailed down with Dick and Robin. And the other thing is, since our interests are joined with the town, it would be worthwhile to have a conversation with the first selectman and make sure we're in alignment on that. It would be nice to think that the United Churches might give us the spaces to make it easier for them to sell the property because if there are agreements and liens and other sorts of things, getting rid of those to move the property may be a good idea for them. So I'm hopeful that we can meet with Dick, meet with Robin, meet with Laura and get an organizational position established for both the town and the library before too much longer. How does that strike people?
Excellent. Good idea.
Good. Sounds good.
Yep.
Okay, in that case, go ahead. Somebody said something?
No, right on. Keep going.
In that case, I'll reach out to Laura, Laura, Robin, Dick, probably through you, Christine, or certainly with you, Christine. And let's get another Zoom meeting going.
Just what I wanted.
Oh, good. And, okay, so we're square on that. Another issue has arisen regarding our other neighbors on the southwest corner of the lot. Betsy and I were out on a walk the other, about three weeks ago and ran into Tina Gosner. And Tina then approached me with an email somewhat on behalf of the Rosses who own the property next to us regarding the invasive species that have grown up and come over the fence and are blocking at least access to some of the spaces. Lynn and I have talked about this. Christine and I have talked about it. There's been lots of emails going back and forth. The town, at this point, John Jenkins has said, he talked to the library a year ago. He's more than willing to remove the plants, but he can't get to it until September. And in fairness, that's because he's not allowed to hire a summer crew. So he's going with the existing crew. So I see his point. Regardless, in the discussions with Lynn and Christine, and both of you correct me if I've got something wrong, we agreed that if they want to take the plants out, the Rosses, fine. If the town wants to do that on their behalf, fine, although that should be in writing because it's the town on their land. As far as putting plantings back in there, the agreement would be no agreement because we're not, we as a library are not going to be putting plantings on somebody else's private property.
Just, Bob, just quick. I went through some old photos. I found the 2010 garden dedication. And in the background, the fencing in that part of the parking lot, there are no plants on our side of the fence. So everything that's over there is from the other property because we weren't sure. But I did find a photo that shows that, just as a information.
So the invasive species are on our neighbor's property. They're encroaching into our property and they can't or won't pull the plants?
We're picking at threads that have been dancing back and forth for a long time. And the basic answer, David, is yes, they want somebody to pull the plants out. They are, and again, this is coming through Tina. So multiple people have gotten involved. And Tina told us that the Rosses were under the understanding that Laura had agreed to pull them out and that PALS had offered to put in new plantings.
Oh, okay.
So as you can tell, this has been going around in a circle for a while. So what I would like the board to do is give some clear direction to John to make sure we don't get in this, well, we talked to the board a year ago kind of thing. And to make sure that the, whatever is done is done in writing so we don't run into this, into a problem five years from now if they do plant something and it comes back over onto our lot again. Or the situation that we've got with the United Churches that nobody knows what was said by whom to whom. So I put together a motion. That is, I'm not even going to move it yet. But what I'm trying to do here is to say, we as a board concur with the town. Go ahead, take the stuff out. Get the landowner's permission because we can't give it to you. And it's for those plants on the southwest side of the parking lot. I don't want to refer to a dress or anything like that, although we can. So what I'd like to do is put this in as a motion. And then let's, as you can with motions, go into a discussion of it if there's a second.
Yeah, I will second that.
Discussion.
I'd like to add something to the effect that that PALS, the library board and PALS have not or will not be responsible for replanting because if we do so, it's on their property. And I just, somehow that should be in there if they assume that's what we said we would do. Because otherwise, they're going to want us to plant on their side, right?
Pat and I checked out the property and talked to Bob. And there shouldn't be any plantings over there because there's less than like a two foot buffer between the fence and the parking area. So in reality, if you put, if, for instance, we put something on our side, it's just going to be the same problem.
Right.
On our side, so. Yeah, we're not, and we have enough plantings that we have to do in our back garden because of the stuff that's been taken down. And it's more than just planting. It's who's going to do the watering? Who's going to, you know, do all that stuff? So we discussed that that's not an option for us to be doing it all.
But the motion only speaks to, we'd like the plants removed so we don't have the invasive species. I presume so the invasive species aren't encroaching on our property.
The invasive species, and I'm using the term Lynn used. So Lynn, if you want to use something else, that's fine. The plants on the Ross property are the ones that are coming over onto our land. Jane, one?
The invasive plants, that's fine because that covers both the invasive species and anything else that's over there because they're invading our site anyways.
I think the politically correct term now is undocumented foliage.
But I don't see the need to discuss replanting. I don't see the need to go into whether somebody's going to replant.
Just leave it as it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would keep, first of all, I'd keep PALS out of this because we don't want to speak on behalf of PALS. That's between.
Correct. Right.
Yeah, right. Agree.
So we have a motion made and seconded. Is there any more discussion on this as a, as a motion?
No, well, the only thing, as part of the discussion, we were going to ask him to trim that stuff back to the fence line prior to the permission to remove the stuff on their property.
My plan, Lynn, is to, once we pass this, is to cover this in an email to John.
Oh, okay.
To, and ask that, but also it's in part to make it very, very clear to him that we're now out of it. It's not our, not our issue anymore.
Right, right. And then it'll make it easier to deal with, too.
If I could make a, just a quick suggestion, Bob, could you copy me on that? And could you request a red receipt from John? Because he's really notorious for not acknowledging emails.
Yes to both. I would have anyhow, but not the green receipt. But yes, of course.
Sometimes I'm like, did you get my email?
I am going to copy Laura on it because, probably should copy Carrie Ross. She was on the emails, well, I'm sorry. Let's, we have a motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote on the motion then. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Good, motion carries. Eric, I will send this to you as an email for your minutes to make it easier to capture.
Thank you.
Sure. Now, back to the trimming issue. Yes, we'll get that, I'll get that to John. I'll copy in Laura because she was on John's email. Carrie Ross has been on the email strings, or at least cariross@something.com has been on the email strings from Tina and others. So I'll copy her on that. But that's, that's now out of our hands. So, okay then. Back to live. Reopening planning, Christine.
Okay, everybody. This has been taking an awful lot of my time and Zoom energy. As you are no doubt aware, the governor has announced a plan for a four phased reopening of state economic activity. Phase one is currently scheduled to start May 20. That date was contingent on certain criteria being met, but it looks like that is going to happen and that May 20 is going to be the phase one reopening date. There's been considerable discussion among libraries and towns about exactly where libraries fall because they are not expressly discussed in any of the state guidance. The state reopening rules are broken down by offices, retail in malls, restaurants, museums and zoos, and hair salons, personal services. Libraries, we have sort of self determined fall somewhere between a retail and a museum establishment, which have different rules. So I have spoken with the other Lyon consortium libraries. The initial, I think I said this at the last meeting, was we were, we would hope to coordinate across the consortium about exactly what we're going to do and when. That does not seem like it is going to be possible because the libraries and their communities are too, too different and are getting too much different instruction from their various municipalities or governing bodies. You know, New London is very different than Durham. I have, however, met with, talked to our public health director and I believe that we have, well, we do have a plan. So the plan for Durham for phase one, we feel in this case we fall closer to a museum in the sense which in phase one does not allow for people inside the building, really, only outdoor activities. So we don't want people lingering. So our plan for phase one is to do three things. Reopen the book drop and allow. Reopen the book drop and allow people to start returning their materials. Materials returned to the library will be sequestered for five days or possibly a week before they are checked in and re-shelved. That is a couple of days more actually than the recommended 72-hour surface recommendation for cleaning, for how long virus lives, the virus lives on surfaces. We are gonna reopen curbside pickup, which we did briefly before everything was shut down by governor's orders in March. The way we are going to do that is patrons will be allowed to, will reopen holds, which are actually not, you can't do that right now, but we're gonna turn that functionality back on. People can place holds on items that are available in Durham because we are not turning on lion-wide holds immediately. Staff members will pull the books and patrons can, and bag them and put people's names on them and check them, well, check them out to the people, then bag them, put them in people, and place them outside where patrons can pick them up. This means that curbside pickup for us happens without any face-to-face contact. The last thing that we would be doing in phase one is allowing no more than two patrons at a time to make appointments to come into the library, to use the public computers, copier fax. They would be obviously separated, required to wear masks, which is a statewide guidance. And everything would be wiped down between patrons. The guidance on employer, employees, is that as many employees as possible should be working from home. So Kim and I are working on a schedule for the minimum number of people to be in the library at the time in order to make the curbside pickup and the appointments viable. We think that's two at a time with possibly the pages coming in to help with the shelving. How many people we need for this kind of depends on how big the demand is, which is kind of an unknown. I have run this plan by our health department, and they have told me that this is a minimal risk and acceptable to them and in, is, is congruent with the state guidelines, even though libraries are not explicitly mentioned in any way. So with your approval, that's what I plan to do. Phase two, we'll get, we can discuss, but let me hop ahead to phase two very briefly. Phase two would involve opening the doors to the public again, probably with limitations on the number of people allowed at a time. You'd probably need to change where people can sit and for how long. The state has not been terribly explicit about what phase two is actually going to look like. There's a tentative date for that of June 20th, but it is very spongy. I think everyone is kind of waiting to see what actually happens with phase one before any real decisions are made about phase two. Looking ahead, we have canceled, we have, we're not planning any in-person programming for the library this summer. I can't imagine that they're gonna allow gatherings or that people would come. So questions on that?
Are we to assume then that in any of these phases, we still have to maintain masks on all patrons and six feet of social distancing? So we have to come up with a scenario that allows for use of the library but keeps six feet between patrons?
Yeah.
And then somehow cleans keyboards and surfaces after people have, yeah.
Yeah.
So somebody thumbing through all the videos could be a real problem, for instance.
You know, it's, it's really interesting because I've been reading the, a lot of, you know, the documentation behind this and the science. And there's a lot of, a lot of people are very worried about surfaces. That's actually not the biggest concern. It's more about the volume of people breathing in the space. So a maskless person is actually a greater risk than someone touching the books. But yes, it, it is, the more people there are, the more things that are touched, the greater the risk becomes.
I agree with you completely on the sci, on the science of the, the touching versus the breathing. It's the, it's the airborne particulate, not the incidentals left on surfaces. And I'm gonna assume the state is not gonna have a mandate about the surfaces, more about the, the six feet and the masks. So I guess the real hard thing here is how to figure out how to maintain a traffic flow in the library that maintains separation.
Right. That, however, is for phase two. In phase one, there's only gonna be two staff members and a maximum of two members of the public in the building at any given time. So I think at that level of service, we can, in fact, easily maintain the distancing.
That's very, that's very manageable.
It's very manageable. It's when we get to, it's when we get to phase two that I think we're gonna really have to think really hard about how that's going to work. My children's librarians are already freaking out about how they're going to manage children in a wide-open space. They don't even have offices. But again, I'm kind of saying to you, and what I've been saying to them is, let's, let's, let's do phase one first, and then we'll plan for phase two after that. Because I think an awful lot is going to depend both for the Durham library, for the greater community, for the state. You know, if we do phase one reopening and transmission continues to go down and hospitalizations keep, continue to go down, you know, there will be a greater confidence in, in an increased, you know, opening. But if that does not happen, they're not gonna let us do phase two at all. So I'm, I'm trying not to get caught up too much on where I'm gonna put the chairs right now because I feel like there are too many unknowns that are going to happen before we can reopen the library. And also, when the state says we can reopen the library, does not mean we have to. We, in fact, will not be able to. Yeah.
I was gonna advocate a very cautious approach. Libraries are some places, we all know, where people linger. And it is lingering that really is the challenge with the airborns. I, I'm, my concern is as much for our staff.
Yeah.
As it is for patrons.
Yeah.
And wanting to make sure that we keep our staff safe.
Yes, absolutely.
When do you foresee reopening the Lyon hold system?
I, we had a long Zoom call yesterday on basically that subject and came to no conclusions. The, the consortium is pretty well split between libraries who feel that circulating books amongst us is not tremendously risky because it's primarily surface and because they essentially self-quarantine for a few days while they're boxed up and in transit. And other libraries who don't feel that they are going to be able to handle any kind of deliveries and don't want to open that up. So there's considerable discussion happening at the consortium level about when and how to reopen that. And if we can reopen it only for the people who want it and not for other libraries, it, it gets a little tricky on the technical side. So the answer to that, Anne, is I really don't know.
Okay.
It's a very long-winded, a long-winded way to say I, I'm not really sure where that is gonna be. I would guess it's gonna, I, I think what's gonna happen is that most of the consortium libraries are doing something similar to what we are, which is we're reopening curbside pickup and limited staff in the library and filling holds just with, you know, what's available locally. And then, once we see how manageable that is and what the volume is, then we'll make the decision whether to, to open holds more widely.
So I would also think like stage, if we went to a stage two, we would be closing off those areas of library that, like the meeting rooms and downstairs, so we don't have people wandering around to other places since we don't have cameras or anything, so you wouldn't even know somebody's there. And the second thing is, I also assume, because it would be more than 10 people and a lot of them, that town meetings would not be coming back to us for a while. I mean, board meetings and stuff.
The current presumption is that groups of people meeting together purposefully in person is probably not going to happen before phase three, and nobody has even given the slightest conjecture about when that might be. So no, phase two will be people in the building for browsing, and what we're gonna need to focus on is how to discourage them from hanging out. Because we are gonna have to discourage that. But again, that's, that, right now, I'm still working on the details of phase one.
I wonder whether it, it might not be a good idea to, you know, on the website or through a newsletter, publish the things, you know, the new books that you have, that you've put into circulation so that people can do more curbside pickup than browsing. If they can browse online, see what's, you know, if, if everybody heads for the new bookshelf, if you can somehow curate that online, then that would facilitate people not coming in the building.
Yes, we're absolutely gonna be doing that. I mean, we'll be doing it in phase one when curbside's the only option for them. And I do think that even when we get to phase two, we'll probably still be encouraging curbside, and there will be people who don't want to come back in even then. But, you know, again, I'm, June 20th seems an awful long way away right now. It'll be on us before we know it, but.
Well, sounds reasonable to me, especially given how uncertain everything is still.
Right. Does anyone have any specific concerns about phase one reopening right now?
No.
Okay.
No, because a lot of that you'd already done before we completely closed. So at least you have a handle on what, how you're gonna run it, which is good.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're essentially just reversing what we had done before. So, so I think we've got a good handle on it. And I think we'll, you know, I suspect there'll be more demand now. I mean, when we did the curbside for that one week, people had been able to be in the library, you know, just a few days before. I think there's gonna be more pent-up demand now. But maybe not, I don't know. Maybe everyone's getting really used to digital, and we'll stick with it. We'll see.
Very good. Anything else, old business that didn't make it under the agenda?
There was one thing I wanted to mention. We had talked many moons ago about going fine-free altogether. Several of the Lyon libraries are actually kind of doing that right now, figuring that, you know, get people back and so forth. However, I floated, Bob and I talked about this, and I floated it to Bob Donahue, the chair of the Board of Finance, and he rather strongly discouraged us from doing that right now. The town is looking for every bit of revenue they can get because they're, 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 they're quite apprehensive about revenue coming in. And even though it's not much money, I think it would be inadvisable to, to, having asked them their opinion and them saying no, I think it would be really inadvisable to do that right now. So, and it's not that, I don't think that it's that big a deal for us. Much as I would like to be fine-free, you know, we did reduce the fines to 10 cents each. We're fairly forgiving and we're a fairly affluent town. There's not that many people who are unable to pay the fines, so.
We'll, we'll keep that, we'll keep that on the agenda for future meetings, but we gotta pull out of this first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is, this is Sherry. Christine, is there gonna be a grace period? Like, how are you gonna handle that once the library opens again? Because you have lots of people with.
No, that, that, we handled that electronically. Everything that, everything that is out in Lyon has been reset with a June 1 date. So there will be no fines.
Before June 1st, then?
Before June.
Or you're gonna, or are you gonna start fines when people start doing curbside on May 20th?
Yes, so anything that got taken out on May 20th and was not returned by three weeks later would in fact have a fine on it. I'm gonna tell my people to be pretty lenient.
So, so if I heard correctly, the fine would not begin until three weeks after May 20th?
For anything that's out right now, if, and when we reopen the book drop, so anything that's out right now is due June 1st.
Okay.
Once we reopen the book drop, it would have to be, well, it depends on what it is. If it's a movie, it would be one week past June 1st. If it's a book, it would be three weeks before it was overdue, and then would be accruing fines. Anything that is taken out from the library before June 1st, because through curbside pickup, its due date would be either one week or three weeks from the date it was taken out. And fines would accrue if it wasn't returned by its due date.
So the, I'm, I'm asking, the books I have are all table that I took out before the quarantine. When do I have to start paying fines on those?
They're due June 1st, so if they're not back by June 21st, you will owe us 10 cents per book.
Per book, oh my God.
I know. Shocking. And, you know, any library that has not reopened its returns will again be pushing out the due dates. So no one is going to be, you know, making bank on the books that have been out for months.
Thank you. Okay, um, general discussion. I, I kept this in here for this month as well. I sort of like to have time just to hear how people are doing and holding up and to hear how Jan thought her first meeting on Zoom went.
It was wonderful. But it, it is.
But it, it is different and it is, you know, it's hard not being with people. So.
It really is.
Especially you people. Yes.
Well, Jane, that's especially true for this board, having read some minutes from some recent meetings, a variety of meetings in town. We're a nice group. So does anyone have any plans to get out of Dodge once things get lifted?
Good prices on cruises. We could all go on a cruise. Next, next to nothing on the most expensive ships.
Maine doesn't want me till maybe July.
Oh, are they gonna stop you at the border?
Um, it sounds like it. Yeah, non-resident, starting in June is two weeks. You have to sit around and you can't leave. You have to bring all your own food and supplies. It's like, oh, so.
On the other hand, you don't really go to Maine to like go out in, uh, public anyway, right? So, uh, we, we were sort of looking at that as well as a family, is like, should we go back to a house we rented in Maine a few, few, few years ago? And, you know, we thought, you sort of thought, yeah, you're supposed to stay out of public places. But then again, like, the reason we would go there is to go to the lake, so maybe that's not a big deal.
Well, it, I, I can't use the beach. We're right near the beach and you can swim, surf, walk or kayak, but you cannot sit on the beach. So.
Right.
You run in the water and then run screaming back out. I, so.
Yeah, Lynn, I was at, I went to Cape Cod this weekend. It was the first weekend, first weekend we'd been away for like eight weeks. I just went and sequestered at my sister's house. We did go out in public. We, you know, we went to the beach. There was nobody on the beach. We walked the dunes in Provincetown and, and walked a mile on the beach and didn't pass a soul. There's nobody on Cape Cod. But we didn't go truly into public. We didn't go into, into a store. We didn't go inside. We just went from sequestering in our house to sequestering in my sister's house 150 miles away.
Very good. Anything else?
I find these Zoom meetings, I'm on a lot of them, Bob, and I read the same, a similar article to Eric, that one of the things that makes it tiring is allegedly your brain is trying to fill in all the gaps. It, it thinks it's in a conversation. It's trying to read, you know, body language and facial expressions and it can't do it real well. So it's working hard trying to fill in the blanks and you get more exhausted from a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
Jane.
There's your cat. You wanna see?
That's a big girl. Oh, there's another.
She's a bad girl.
Looks, looks like, looks like my coworkers. Well, in that case, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I'm second.
All in favor, can leave the meeting. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good to see you. Everyone. Talk to you soon. Thank you.